Good evening. Today is Thursday, February 13th, 2025. I'd like to call this meeting of the Auburn City Council to order. Mr. Clerk, please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Here.
Counselor Overstreet Wilson?
Here.
Counselor Cuddy?
Here.
Counselor Clarko?
Here.
Mayor Genatino?
Here. Please stand and join us in the Pledge of Allegiance.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
Please remain standing for a moment of silent prayer or reflection. Thank you. Please be seated. Mr. Clerk, public announcements.
Thanks, Mayor. Just have one quick announcement tonight. Just want to get the word out to everybody that Cuge County has announced that the Spring Electronics Recycling Event is happening on March 22nd, 2025. This is the event that you can bring electronic goods for recycling for free. And this event this year is being held about two months earlier than they usually hold it. They usually hold this event later in the spring, but this year it's being held early. Pre-registration is required. All the information for this is on the City of Auburn's homepage at auburnny.gov, but I know that this is a much anticipated event by local residents, and this year it's being held a couple of months early. So we're just trying to help them spread the word. Again, it'll be Saturday, March 22nd, in the morning, and you do need to pre-register, pre-register, and all that information is uploaded to the city's website.
Very good. Thank you. This evening, we have the swearing-in for Police Chief Matthew Andrasco. Chief Andrasco and your family, would you like to join me at the Senate Rail, please?
Guys, get this on first. I'd first like to thank the mayor, the city council, and the city managers for giving me this opportunity and trusting me with overseeing the police department. Obviously, it's a big task, but I feel like I can lead us forward. I'd also like to thank the support from the other PDs that came and the surrounding agencies, and obviously the outpouring support I've been receiving through texts and through Facebook messages and other means of social media and seeing people on the street. I greatly appreciate it. I'd like to thank my wife and my children, my family, my friends. Obviously, through the years, we've the support's been there, so it's appreciated. I'd like to look forward to leading the men and women of the police department and progressing us forward in this new era of the Auburn Police Department. We have the best personnel in the state, and I firmly believe that. The Auburn, the officers of the Auburn Police Department will continue to make efforts and make our streets safer, our community safer. We will strengthen the bridges that we've already built with the community from our predecessors before us, whether it's the officer that was on the street, whether it was the Chief Slaton or Chief Butler that was here prior to me. We will continue those efforts. I look forward to doing that. As previously stated in other interviews, I plan on implementing different strategies at the police department. We'll be moving to more of an evidence-based style policing. This should allow us to assess ourselves and hold ourselves accountable when we need to. Policing has evolved since the inception of the first police department. It will continue to do so, and so will we at the Auburn Police Department. I know I look forward to looking with, working with the community because it's also my community here, so it means a lot to me here, this whole community. We're all one, so. I will continue to reach across the aisle with my hand. I will offer an ear to listen or a voice when somebody needs to be heard. Last, I'd like to thank the community for the outpouring support, and I look forward to working on our future endeavors with each other. Thank you.
Chief, thank you for your years of service to the Auburn Police Department and this community. Thank you for stepping up and accepting this responsibility to lead this department into the future. And to the men and women in uniform here tonight, thank you for all that you do to keep our community safe. It is greatly appreciated. With that, we're going to take a 10-minute recess, unless everybody wants to stay here. We'll be in recess. Bye, Sage. She didn't have to run. She can take it. All right, I'm going to call us back into order. Public to be heard.
At this point in time, we will open the public to be heard portion of the council meeting. Residents are asked to state their name and address for the record. Please keep remarks to three minutes or less. Please remember rules of courtesy and decorum.
Thank you. Is there anybody wishing to be heard this evening? All right, we'll close the public to be heard, move on to the approval of the meeting minutes from February 6th, 2025. We have a sponsor, Counselor Kent, seconded by Counselor Clarko. Discussion, questions, changes? Hearing done. Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Overstreet Wilson?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Clarko?
Aye.
Mayor Genatino?
Aye.
City Managers report.
Thank you, Mayor. We are currently accepting responses to an RFQ for legal services related to energy investment tax credits. Those responses are due tomorrow, February 14th. Again, as I've mentioned every week, the work on Hoop's Park Pond restoration continues. We understand its inconvenience. Try to keep especially folks in the neighborhood updated on progress there as we move along with this project in cooperation with the Cuge County Soil and Water Conservation District and funded through a grant through DASNY. Let's see, February 10th, we were advised that the city has once again been designated as a Tree City by the Arbor Day Foundation. And I've mentioned a couple of times in recent weeks, as has Mike Talbot, our Director of Public Works, that much like practically every other municipality in New York State, the road salt issue was getting to where it was going to affect us. It was going to be potentially a little bit of a tight weekend here with the snow event coming. We were notified late today that through the efforts of New York State Office of General Services, or OGS, they have secured some, I believe, some other contracts with other suppliers. We are scheduled to receive 500 tons of road salt tomorrow, so Happy Valentine's Day to the DPW and all of our residents, as we're slated again, to get significant snow this weekend, so. And make it to Valentine's Dinner safely. And the last thing I had, and the reason Chief Andrasco is hanging out here and out with his friends and family right now, is he's going to give us a little bit of an update on the STRIVE grant that will be, I believe, done next week, September.
So the state approached us in regards to a grant that's called STRIVE, which stands for statewide targeted reduction in intimate partner violence. It's a domestic violence grant. We used to have a domestic violence grant years ago. With that being said, the grant is collaborated with us, the Sheriff's Department, DA's office, CAP, CAC, probation. It's similar setup like GIV, so we are, it's again evidence-based policing, so the two are going to go hand in hand with each other. We will be one of the co-chairs on the grant. The data will be gathered, which we already have siloed at the PD and Spillment, so we're looking, once we get the data analysts up and running, to then disperse it amongst the other agencies involved with the grant. The police department would be allotted close to 300,000. It should cover a position up in the Detective Bureau and also possibly a coordinator and some of the data analysts along with overtime for details and training. We were told the duration of the grant so far is at least two years. However, they said that it's going to be similar to GIV and GIVES in its 11th year. So I'm guessing this is going to be a pretty long duration for this grant, but I, they didn't confirm that, though. We're hoping that you'll support this grant. Obviously, it's to help victims of domestic violence through the community. We think it's going to be a vital role of possibly assisting those individuals, along with, there's a portion that educates offenders, so it's not always punitive and punishable, so we're looking to obviously eliminate it from the cause of maybe educate them in some sort of, so they stop. That's the main goal. So look forward to obviously senior support, so thank you.
Thank you, Chief. Any, any questions for the chief?
One. Chief, do we have applicants for the data analyst position?
So we actually went through those this morning.
Okay.
We reached out to the Crime Analysis Center earlier this week. We went through what we thought qualified. Some of them didn't have levels of education that were there or work experience, so we emailed them this morning. We got some responses back. We're waiting here back, so hopefully we can move quickly and forward with that, so.
Great, great. Thank you.
Yep.
Thank you, Chief.
Thanks, Chief. I guess you could probably leave now and go take care of the rainbows that's crossed itself.
Thank you. Congratulations again. Reports from members of council? Counselor Kent?
Last night, I attended the Booker T. Washington Community Center Love Dinner. It was delicious. We had entertainment from "Perform For Purpose" and special guest drummers. Sheriff Shank and our own Chief Andrasco performed. It was a good crowd. It was a lot of fun, so I wanted to share that.
Very good. Thank you. Anyone else? Tuesday afternoon, I had the opportunity, actually the pleasure, of going to E. John Gaver Center and recognizing Ms. Patricia Cleaver, who celebrated her 45th year of being a speech therapist at the Gaver Center. What a remarkable achievement and what a gift to this community and the number of children and people that she's, she's assisted. And I was telling her, I'm pretty sure my brother was one of them. He went there in the early 80s for speech, so they continue to do great work there. Yesterday, City Manager Diger and Assistant City Manager Haynes and I took a tour of Nucor Steel here in Auburn. I want to acknowledge Lamar Henry and Blake Turner, team members there at Nucor, who took us through the plant. It's, I think you would agree, pretty amazing to see the process in motion, making steel, cutting steel, to hear just how involved it is. You don't really understand it until they explain it to you, how involved the process is. Nucor currently employs 275 team members. They are getting ready to celebrate their 50th year, 50th year here in Auburn, so that's a remarkable achievement. We're certainly happy to have them. It was nice to talk to them and just kind of see what their concerns are going forward and how we can collaborate, and we hope to keep those lines of communication open with them. Moving on to Council Resolution Number 15 of 2025, approving submission of CDBG five-year consolidated plan and the 2025-2026 annual action plan. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Cuddy, seconded by Counselor Kent.
Council Resolution 15 of 2025, where the City of Auburn is an entitlement community for the Community Development Block Grant Program and is required to submit a five-year consolidated plan with an annual statement of objectives and uses of the CDBG entitlement program funds. Whereas the City of Auburn has prepared the 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan and the related 2025 through 2026 annual action plan outlining the community development activities, objectives, and budget for use of the funds. And whereas the City of Auburn has held public meetings to solicit participation and input into the preparation of both the proposed consolidated plan and annual action plan. And whereas the City of Auburn held a public hearing in the council chambers on December 19th, 2024, and held a public hearing on February 6th, 2025, during this public comment period. And whereas the City of Auburn published the notice of the consolidated plan and action plan on January 9th, 2025, to start the local comment period. Now therefore, being resolved by the council of the City of Auburn, that the council does hereby approve the 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan and 2025-26 annual action plan. The City Council does hereby authorize the mayor to sign the application for federal assistance and submit the 2025 through 2029 consolidated plan and 2025-26 annual action plan to the United States Department of Housing and Urban Development for the CDBG entitlement grant to complete the objectives of the 2025-26 annual action plan. And the City Council does hereby authorize and direct the mayor to sign the funding approval agreement with the United States Department of HUD necessary to further the objectives of the 2025-26 annual action plan and prior year amendments and all related subrecipient and other agreements necessary to further the objectives of the annual action plan. And finally, the City Council does hereby authorize the City Controller's Office to recognize the grant revenue and appropriate funding into the correct departmental budgets.
Thank you. Last week, we received an in-depth presentation on the plans. With us this evening is Ms. Jensen from the Planning Department. If anybody has any additional questions this week? Hearing done. Please call the roll.
I just want to just thank you again for putting this together. It's always a really ambitious report that I keep putting down, and then I pick it up again, and there's just so much information in there. It's like taking the heartbeat of this city every once in a while, because I don't think we really pull things out and look at them this way, but really appreciate the work that goes into this. Thank you.
Very good. Anyone else? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Overstreet Wilson?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Clarko?
Aye.
Mayor Genatino?
Aye.
Council Resolution Number 16 of 2025, awarding a contract for facilitation of community dialogue. Do we have a sponsor? Counselor Clarko, seconded by Counselor Kent.
Award Resolution 16 of 2025, where the City of Auburn released a request for proposal for the purpose of facilitation of community dialogue to enhance and inform continual improvement of law enforcement practice. And whereas on November 13th, 2024, proposals were opened for facilitation of the community dialogue with submissions received from the following firms: Center for Governmental Research of Rochester, New York, Gwen Inc. of Auburn, New York, Edward Davis Company of Boston, Massachusetts, and William E. Barry Jr. of Auburn, New York. Whereas all firms responding to the request for proposal were qualified, now therefore be it resolved, the City Council does hereby award the contract for facilitation of community dialogue to the Center for Governmental Research in the amount of $35,000, the cost of which is to be charged to the account number A1420.417. Be it further resolved, the City Council authorizes the controller to transfer $35,000 from fund balance to the account A1420.417 to cover the cost of the agreement.
Mr. Diger, do you have anything to add?
No, as a background memo states, there was a committee forum, including Counselors Kent and Overstreet Wilson, myself, Assistant City Manager Haynes, representatives from the police department, to do interviews with some of these organizations, and we landed on the Center for Government Research based on their, both their experience, they have experience doing these types of things in other communities, as well as the team that they actually bring to the table. So it's, it's a, a group of folks with various backgrounds that will be helping us conduct this work.
Very good. Any questions or discussion?
I do. Before we, before you call for a vote, I didn't get a chance to ask this question when we all, when we all met, but within the scope of the RFP, I know things are laid out pretty concise, and I think it meets the goals of what everybody is trying to achieve. But is there room if we get in the process and discover that maybe a little more time needs to be spent on this area? Are we able to shift, you know, we're paying for a certain amount of time, so are we able to shift maybe hours here and take them from other parts of things that we're trying to cover? I guess, yeah, that's what I'm asking.
I can't answer that with absolute certainty because I'm not sure how the, the company would react to that, but I think based on the, the good back and forth dialogue we've had, getting to the scope that we currently have compared to what they originally presented, I, I feel like they'd be open to that. I feel like they want to present us and provide the product we're looking for, so I would think they'd be open to that.
I would think they would be too. I guess I was, I was wondering, you know, just as a council and as a manager and the mayor, if that was something that we needed to request, if we would be, you know, as a council and leadership, city leadership, if we would be okay even asking that firm. Like we need to shift some more time to spend over here because we feel like maybe a little less time might be needed on a different area. But you know, sometimes when you get into the minutia of things, you don't know what you don't know until you discover.
Difficult for me to answer a vague question with certainty, but I would say that I, I think that, again, based on the conversations we've had with CGR, they're, they're going to be open to providing us the product that we desire in the end.
Any other questions? Please call the roll.
Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Overstreet Wilson?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Clarko?
Aye.
Mayor Genatino?
Aye.
This evening, we have a presentation, the summary of our financial statements for the year and June 30th, 2024. With us, we have representatives from Drescher and Malecki. Is that?
That's right.
All right, very good. Welcome.
Thanks. We have some handouts too, so you can follow along.
Thank you. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Luke Malecki. I was the engagement partner on your external audit for June 30th, 2024. With me is Amy Hainesley, and she was the manager that oversaw the day-to-day Purpose of tonight's presentation is just to put a, a real brief communication on the results of our audit, kind of wrapping up the final stages. We have gotten all the evidence that we needed, and we're just in the process of finalizing the reports. We anticipate releasing the financial statement audit within the next week or two. We did meet with the city manager, the controller's office, and a few of the other representatives of the city in January to go over the results in more detail. Tonight's purpose is really just a brief overview. So I'll let Amy start off with kind of going through the products.
So I'm going to start by going through the products of our audit. The most important one, and the first one we're going to talk about, are the basic financial statements. So the financials that we provided with you are based on the trial balance or the numbers that are given to us by the city. So they are your financial statements, but within those financial statements, there's opinions or reports that we provide. So the first one is the opinion on the financial statements. So that is a clean, unmodified opinion for two thousand twenty-four. Next is the report on internal control for the city. And the last is the report on compliance for each major federal program, which is the single audit or any of the federal money that you guys receive. In two thousand twenty-four, we did note a significant deficiency in internal control. So that included year-end adjustments and accrual reconciliations. And then management will be able to provide a response to this. So some of that had to do with the ambulance receivable coming in a little bit later and trying to get reports for that, and just some year-end accruals that happened that kind of were a little delayed or just took some time to get through. Next on our list is the management letter. So typically, we use our management letter as a way to kind of provide recommendations or best practices to the city. For two thousand twenty-four, we included a few things for the management letter, including the policies and procedures. So we included in that journal entries, capital assets, a debt policy, capital projects, and then a fund balance policy. And then lastly, in there, we included proprietary funds. Part of that includes the long-term interfund loan that exists between the proprietary funds and the general fund. So that's just something we highlighted in the management letter as well. And then in our auditor communications, we as a firm are independent of the city, which is what allows us to perform the audit for you guys. Our responsibility is to plan and perform the audit to obtain reasonable assurance about whether the financial statements are free from material misstatement. Within this communication, we also include any significant accounting policies, including any new gas fees that the city would have to implement, as well as any significant accounting estimates such as the pension or the OPIB liabilities. And then last, any other matters that were required to communicate. So for two thousand twenty-four, we also included in the city's financial statements a few restatements for net position and fund balance as of June thirtieth, two thousand twenty-three. So during the year, there were some reevaluations for the treatment of forfeiture account activity in the general fund, as well as some review of receivables in the capital fund at year-end, two thousand twenty-three, that required a restatement. And then lastly, there was a revolving loan that was removed from the capital fund and moved to its own special revenue fund just for tracking purposes, so that was also part of the restatement. And then the last product of our audit is the New York State Department of Transportation report, so that's any of your New York State DOT funding that is spent during the year.
So before we get into some of the financial things, just to recap, the significant deficiency was an upgrade from last year's finding that the other auditors, the pre-assessing auditors had. We did start to see Mary Beth kind of fall into her role in the controller's office and taking on a lot more than I think anyone really knew was going to be presented to her. So I would do want to note that there was significant strides from what we've looked at with the previous audit report, and there's still a little bit more work to do, but I do anticipate with a full, another, one, the second full year under her belt with a, within the city, that that comment should be running indeed for next year. I anticipate it, so we're hopeful. I know Amy rattled off a lot of different policies that we need to be implemented, would we'd like to be seen implemented. We talked at length with Mary Beth on all those. There are going to be a couple as we go through some of the financial information that will probably pique the interest of the council, because just you're headed into an area of financial trends that have started to statewide, nationwide, inflationary trends usually hit hard against governments, where your revenues are kind of stuck and slow, and expenses, as we've seen over the last couple of years, have been pretty intense. So we'll look at that as kind of a prelude to what we're about to look through within the financial statements. So what you're looking at here is just the five-year trend of your revenues and expenses. As you can see, from twenty twenty to twenty twenty-three, revenues and expenses kept pace. That's the goal of any government, is to make those, that line, the red line be as close as possible to the blue line, and it was pretty successful doing that during the kind of the post-pandemic years. Now, this past year and the year prior, there was a little bit more of an uptick as far as the blue exceeding the red. The two thousand twenty-three was the last year's audit, so I won't get too deep into that, but I do want to take you to take the two thousand twenty-four's results of activity with a little bit of a grain of salt, because within that blue portion, it looks like there's a little bit higher of revenues, it increased about eleven point six from the previous year, but five point one million of that was a transfer from closing those capital projects that went from right from the capital projects fund right into the debt reserve. So should that not have happened, the actual fund balance would have seen about a one point four million dollar dip. And when we look at unassigned fund balance later in the presentation, you'll see kind of the effects of that. So if we were to isolate that five million dollar transfer from the financial statements, your revenues actually were flat, zero percent increase year over year. And that's where we get in concerns when you have a flat revenue and the world has increasing costs. You start to have a little bit of pressure on the fund balance and the budget moving forward. So when you look at expenses, expenses totaled forty-six point four million, that's up pretty close to two and a half, about two point three million from the previous year, and that's about a five point three percent increase. When you think about where inflationary was, I mean, we started twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, about a seven percent, ended the year close to three percent, you get an average. So you're really keeping pace with CPI as far as that looks at, from an outside looking in. The issue becomes is that revenues in governments tend to be a little bit at a lag, so you got to kind of weather that storm while you're, while you're looking at, a close look at your budget moving forward. So just taking a click, a little closer look at where the revenues fell year over year. Your total budget for just the revenues, and this includes transfers in, but just the revenues kind of isolating that one-time remedy within the capital projects funds, you, you plan to use about, or plan to raise about forty-one million dollars of revenues in the city, and you actually raised slightly over that, about forty point six million. Some of that was money, grants that came in that were adjustments in the budget, additional use of ARPA funds that helped, as well as kind of the, the offset of those inflationary trends is some beneficial, beneficial interest earnings. Interest earnings did increase by a few hundred thousand dollars as well. Where the departments that, the areas that missed the budget, so, so the things that helped the budget revenues were your interest earnings and your federal aid dollars coming in. Sales tax didn't quite get to the expectations of, of, of where in the budget. And the reason you want to keep these in mind is you're entering into budget season for twenty-five, twenty-six. As we enter into that kind, that season, just keeping in mind, these are kind of the areas in the budget that you might have to have a little bit closer look at. So sales tax of where that's going and where that's headed. We started seeing that statewide. We work with over a hundred and fifty different municipalities, so we're seeing the trends throughout. Your trends are very similar to the other municipalities we work with, but part of that trend is a little bit downward push on that sales tax coming into our municipalities that we work with. The other one that's a commonly miss on a, a, a short, a common shortfall on revenues is departmental revenues. A lot of that is just driven by either the, the improvements and buildings that are being constructed within the community with your license and permits. We're starting to see that slow down with the inflationary trends. There's less people putting in home equity mortgages and so forth, so less of license and permits, and then as well as the fines and forfeitures, and that's always seems to be an ongoing battle within our municipalities that the council or the town boards or whoever we're working with at the time want this level of fines and forfeitures, but that doesn't always align with those that are trying to enforce those fines and forfeitures. So just a few areas to keep in mind when you're entering into the budget. When you're looking year over year, you'll see a pretty good uptick on twenty-four, twenty-three, twenty-four from twenty-three with real property taxes and tax items. That's not necessarily a one and a half mil, or one million dollar, or one and a half million dollar tax increase. What happened was a lot of the old deferred items that were kind of getting cleaned up from the COVID years and, and those difficult pandemics, as well as an uptick in forfeitures within there. And the timing of pilots, a lot of the pilots were billed and kind of hit into the current fiscal year rather than the preceding fiscal year. Sales tax, as I said, it didn't meet the budget, but it did increase slightly. So we're not seeing that twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one increases across the state where everyone's sales tax increased from about ten to twenty percent. Now we're starting to stabilize at two to three percent as we're moving forward. The orange portion there, that is that nine point six million, that include, that's where your transfers are. That's that one, kind of one-and-done transfer item within there. The red portion, we're starting to see statewide, nationwide, that we're going back to the pre-COVID levels of federal aid. There's also some FEMA money in there from some of the storms that came through. But that is going to be kind of a continuing trend as, as the ARPA money starts to, to, to be required to be used over the next eighteen months or so. So we're starting to see the municipalities we're working with going back to those twenty nineteen, twenty twenty levels of federal aid. And then the last item is departmental aid, and the big driver in that, of course, is the ambulance funding. On the next slide, I'll just go quickly through the expenses. Expenses were originally budgeted at about forty-four point seven million dollars, and actual went about forty-five point seven. And the reason for that was some budget adjustments. There were budget adjustments through the year to accept new grants, similar to what you just did earlier today, and also having some of that ARPA money go through there. So the, the biggest areas where we saw budget adjustments were within public safety salaries and overtime, as well as some money being used for the ambulance, for example, within the health. Looking year over year, we saw the total expenses increase by about five percent from forty-four million to forty-six point four million. And the biggest driver of that is the public safety went up by about one point two. A lot of those are salary costs and overtime costs within that line item. Employee benefits, fortunately, actually did go down slightly. That would include your health insurance, your New York State retirement system, New York State Police and Fire, so that was a favorable, favorable one. A lot of your contracts and a lot of those inflationary pressures are in the general government support. That one did increase by about six hundred thousand dollars in that, in that area. And then the last one to point out is health also increases by about eight hundred thousand, and about a quarter million of that eight hundred thousand was the ambulance purchase. So if you isolate that out, you're looking more at about five hundred thousand or so increased in health, and a lot of that was from salary and overtime costs. So what we looked at, what, what did that end it is, your fund balance did end up going up by about three and a half million, as I said, and that ended the year at ten point one million dollars. Amy did mention a, in a long-term interfund loan between your proprietary fund. That's the public utility fund. For several years now, there's been about a two point three, anywhere from two point two million from two, two million to two point five million on the books. Unfortunately, governmental generally accepted accounting principle says if it's not available and accessible, then it needs to be a non-spendable fund balance. So what we did is we kind of presented twenty-three as if that two point seven million dollars within that, that, that interfund was non-spendable, just so you're looking at apples to apples here. This year, and, and your controller agrees that that should be a two point three million dollar non-spendable fund balance, and that's going to stay there until that money starts to get freed up. So it looks like it's general fund money that's tied up, but it's actually the power utility money that's causing this extra strain on the general fund. So that will stay until there's a payment plan in place that starts to pay that down. The next item within this chart on the two thousand twenty-four column is five point three million dollars of restricted. The lion's share of that is a five point one million dollar debt reserve. Mary Beth did an outstanding job going through your existing external debt, determining what debt could be paid down vis-à-vis the ban, or what debt needed to just go into a debt reserve. Now that's a nice little thing to have handy as you're getting into a budget session, because you're going to enter into a realm where when you look at your fund balance at about a million dollars, you're going to start, the capital needs aren't going anywhere, but your debt load is still what your debt load is. So you're entering an, an area where you're looking at a long-term capital planning, and part of that long-term capital plan is using some of that debt reserve to help offset some of the debt costs to maybe start issuing or introducing into the budget some capital reserve models that you can start actually budgeting for capital reserve. And that capital reserve portion could then be either used to actually save and, and kind of put some of the, the, forward some of the upfront costs on these capital projects, or it could get converted into an additional debt payment as you start to go. So that, when I talked about the policies that Amy talked about that are going to probably be the most prevalent for you, it's identifying what your level of fund balance should be. Right now, you're at about available fund balance of a million dollars. That's about two percent of your annual spending. No one will give you a concrete number of what that should be. It's really going to be the preference of the common council. But there are publications out there by institutions such as the Government Finance Officers Associations that recommends having about two months of spending in kind of that rainy day fund, and that would be about seventeen percent. So you're at about, again, about two percent of that, so you need to kind of eight X that amount to get to where the recommendation would be. Obviously, this isn't an overnight, an overnight item to, to kind of, to get through, but the combination of a fund balance policy as well as a debt management policy, making sure that the, the situation where you have a five point one million dollars of unspent debt proceeds that were kind of hidden in the capital projects fund, how do you avoid having that repeat itself? And a lot of that is making sure that you have a more concrete debt management policy that allows you to only take out money that you're going to be spending in the next foreseeable future, whatever your debt cycle, whether it be six months or twelve months, however it might be. And then you tie all that into your long-term capital project planning model to making sure that, hey, we understand that the city has capital needs, but we got to go, the, the approach needs to be a more strategic method so that you're not taking, absorbing an amount of debt on at once, and it becomes more of a structured-out policy as far as where, where that goes. So when you're looking at those policies that the council and the mayor's office are probably most curious about, it's really the combination of those three. There's no one-way, one-size-fits-all for any municipality. And there's no really stringent timeline as far as like, hey, this could take five years, ten years, fifteen, whatever it's going to be. It's really going to be your mix, but those are the items that we saw as the highest kind of concern, is making sure as you're entering into this next budget, you're not just looking at twenty-five, twenty-six, you're looking probably three or five years into the future to make sure that those projects are getting accomplished. The other point that, on this slide that I'd like to make, and the last one on this one, is that the twenty-four, twenty-five budget had appropriated about one point six million dollars of fund balance. You're entering twenty-five, twenty-six with about, if the twenty-four, twenty-five budget comes to fruition and that money's used, that is not going to be available for the twenty-five, twenty-six. I don't know how twenty-four, twenty-five's going. It very well, maybe that, that one point five doesn't get used, and that goes back into the unassigned fund balance, but it is an area of observation that you might want to pay attention to. That one point five, one point two that you've had the last few years may not always be there as you start to get into this forward-looking kind of theme of budgeting. So just a couple of, recapping on a, a couple of observations and looking at the other financials of the other funds. Just your, your current debt load of where it was at twenty-three versus where it was at twenty-four, and where we expect it to go in twenty-five. At twenty-three, there was about ninety-three million dollars of outstanding debt. So when you're, and you, if you just wanted to kind of zero in and hone in on your general fund, about seventy-five million of that was in the general fund. Within twenty-four, that number went up to eighty-seven point four, or eighty-seven point two in the general fund. The rest was in the public utilities and the solid waste. The public utilities and solid waste at twenty-three had about nineteen million, and at twenty-four, went down to about eighteen million. Now, so that were total about a hundred and six million dollars in two thousand twenty-four. We didn't audit it, but in talking with the controller's office, close to about twenty million of that has been paid down through the form of the bands, and that's again, where that's where that debt policy, that, that shouldn't really happen in a year to year. And that's again, where that's where that debt policy, that, that shouldn't really happen on a year-to-year basis that you should be taking out the money, especially when you're in a high-interest rate environment. Gone, six, seven years ago, it probably wouldn't have been such a big deal because money was basically free. It was 0.3 interest, percent interest. Nowadays, we're looking at anywhere from 5 to 7% that some of these short-term bands are going depending on your credit score, or your bond rating. So making sure that you're taking out the only money that, that needs to be there. But the long and short of it is where we expect with the transactions that the controllers explain, it's probably closer to around 80 million now, correct? So around 80 million when you're entering into '24, '25. What the right level of debt versus equity type ratios, that's not my cup of tea. That's, that would be where you'd use your fiscal advisors on this one to kind of pick their brains on where you want that debt to go. And the reason it's important is when you start to kind of incorporate those other policies I've talked about, just like you're going to have a goal of a fund balance eventually, you also will have a goal of when you can take on more debt. Because that's going to indicate when you can bring on those projects. And then, of course, being able to pay for those through, if you were able to initiate kind of a capital reserve line within the budget process. So that's kind of the, the, the big takeaway that we had when we were going through your books and records. It's not uncommon at this day and age right now, as I said at the beginning, with the way the inflationary trends are going statewide. And, you know, you can't, unfortunately, you can't just sit there and raise your rates in the middle of the year because inflation turned out to be 7%. You're planning your budgets about 18 months in advance. The other funds, the capital projects fund had about $34 million of spending. Obviously, those are the big projects within the sewer fund, about 24.5 million of that was the sewer projects. The actual sewer fund did decrease by about 623,000, still pretty healthy fund balance within that fund, about three and a half million. The water fund actually increased by about a million and a half to 4.1. And then the power, utility, and solid waste, those are ones that continually have about a, close to a $3 million combined loan from the general fund to help operations. So certainly something to keep an eye on as you're entering into the budget season. So that's really the formal presentation. I'd be happy to answer any questions if you don't have any now. My information as well as Amy's is on there. As I said, we have a lot of similar clients throughout New York State, work with several different cities, a lot of different municipalities. So we try to be kind of a foster of shared ideas within different communities. But just, that's everything. So any questions?
Counselor Cuddy?
Luke and Amy, thank you very much. This is a very thorough, you know, audit presentation. We appreciate that. It gives us a very clear idea graphically. And also, I, I also like how you frame and anticipate, you know, the future. You know, I think that's important, especially as a, you know, as CPAs providing an audit. It is helpful for, for the city council to, to, to at least know where we are and anticipate some of the hardships that might happen based on where we are. So I do appreciate that. I just want to thank you both for the very thorough presentation and, you know, very, thank, thank you.
You're welcome. And we're here to help. If there's any sort of policies, all the policies I've listed, we have clients that have similar policies that would be happy. Beautiful thing about working with municipalities, everything's foilable, so I can get my hands on those and share those with you guys as well. And it is, it's a forward-looking thing. I mean, it, the numbers are what they are now, but that doesn't, that doesn't necessarily dictate what the future is going to become. Those are the decisions that you'll be making in the coming months.
Yes, and we agree that our controller is doing a great job getting, getting our fiscal house in order. And we appreciate your giving her the kudos that we ourselves feel. So we're very grateful to have her.
Alson? Anyone else? Thank you both. You, you mentioned some corrections that need to be made. What is a timeframe for those to get?
So we, the corrections really aren't, it's, I think it was, Amy mentioned management's response. I think it might have been it. And then as far as the corrections, we had our report go, your report go through our concurring review process and Amy was working on those today. So it could be finalized next week or the week after. There's really.
Very good.
So two weeks maximum. You can go with that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Other business from the council? Do we have a request for executive session, Mr. Dugan?
Yes, Mayor, we have one item made confidential under attorney-client privilege and two items related to sale or lease real property.
Very good. Anyone else? We have a motion for executive session. Counselor Clarko, Second Base, Counselor Kent, please call the roll.
Executive session at 5:55 PM. Counselor Kent?
Yes.
Counselor Overstreet Wilson?
Yes.
Counselor Cuddy?
Yes.
Counselor Clarko?
Hi.
Mayor Genatino?
Hi. We'll be in recess for executive session.